I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do audio windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly.
I'm Arthur Boyle of Performance Appraisal Services. We're residential real estate appraisers with a company founded in 1994 by Mike Giannelli and I in the basement of my house in Malden. We've since grown to have offices in Malden and Pembroke. We serve the Eastern Mass counties, including Cape Cod. A good client for us is an attorney or a private landowner or a private property owner who's going through a probate process or a divorced division of property. Call us at 781-293-6900. Ask for Arthur Boyle or Amanda Boyle Graziosi. Our first name is Performance.
Oh, we'd cabin with a well.
He had a well, right?
Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording which means to ensure an accurate recording, record, an accurate record of proceedings produced in the event of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. So we're, I guess, on the continuing public hearing for proposed site plan SP 117 at 220 Center Street for a mixed use project. Have we closed all the hearings?
Except for the architectural.
Except for the architectural.
And the land, there was a...
There is one.
Yeah. There were, I think, three things that I needed to... Three or four, I can't remember, that I needed to change or that the board wanted me to address, which I've done. The first being I showed the continuation of the sidewalk going all the way past the commercial to the street. The civil engineer had left that off when he'd done it, so now it shows it on the current drawing. I have a two-foot bump-in on the commercial building right at the end of the gable, so there's a separation, so that'll go in right after the gable and then continue back to break up that 60-foot run to 30 feet and 30 feet. And on the landscaping plan, we put a... We show a barrier, and I'll pass out. I have smaller copies, 11 by 17, but just so you know where... And on the landscaping plan, we put the barrier at the end of the road, right there, a row of hedges and some larger trees. I think that was it. Here are the... I didn't have redo the rendering because the only thing that changed was the two-foot bump-in, and it's on the other side, so... It's on the... But I showed it on the footprint of the building. I know, I think that addressed all of Peter's comments as well. I got...
You have more?
So yeah, so Peter's most recent comments are in your packet, and I think basically things are all set. One thing he mentions is there's no landscape architect stamp, but the drawings I have do have that stamp, so I'm not sure if maybe he missed, he just forgot to change that or if he was looking at digital copies or something else. But the drawings that I received have the landscape architect stamps, so I think we're okay. Peter's actually going to be coming in at 8 o'clock tonight for the Oak Street hearing, so... Or a few minutes before, so you can ask him any questions about it. But it seems like basically everything's okay.
Oh, and move that...
There are the waivers. He mentions the waivers in there, but I think you guys are already on board with that.
And the dumpster pad. He eliminated the dumpster pad and show a smaller bin receptacle area on the parking lot for the commercial space.
How many units do you have now?
13 plus the two.
Oh, okay, because I'm like, how do we get to 15? It's the 13 plus the two...
Yeah, yeah, two compartments, yeah.
John, one quick question.
Yep.
If my math is right, you get a 50 by 30 building out, shall we say, along the street, and then that's connected to a 30 by 30 structure, both the two stories and the... Right?
Yep.
So do I have... Let's see. 30 by 30 would be obviously 900, and then you get 1500 at that. So 15 plus 9, 20... Are we talking about 2,400 square feet of area in that building?
No, it's 55. I don't know if you can see it. It might be on the smaller copy, it's hard, but the front of the... It's 55 by 30 is the front.
So we're over 5,000 square feet. You're over 2,500.
2,550 for commercial, and then the upstairs... That's the whole first floor, and then the upstairs is about slightly smaller because obviously the ridge lines and the...
Okay, but you're approaching between the two structures, between the two stories. Somewhere in the vicinity of like 4,500 square feet.
Yeah, I think that's what you have over here. I think there's a commercial building at... What is it? It's... Oh, no, I haven't... I think it's like 4,600 square feet. I'd say something like that.
Initially, you came to us and said you were going to propose a building about 3,000 square feet.
Well, no, I'm talking about the commercial. The commercial was always... The whole building, you know, the FAR...
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't mind the distribution or what have you, I'm just...
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we understand that we're really talking about that.
Yeah, yeah, the whole commercial is the first floor footprint of 2,550.
Looks like the whole building is 3,750 square feet of usable area. 2,550 on the first floor was for the commercial, plus the two apartments outside the model total, 1,200 square feet, based on the information.
Yeah, the only thing with the change, I don't know if those depth square footage was changed on the upstairs when the building design was changed to the historical, because this one, this design actually creates a little more space because it goes straight up. I don't have gables, and I mean, I don't have roof racks, you know, unusable space, I should say, in the eaves, so...
But the commercial stayed the same.
Yeah, the commercial did.
On the building elevations itself, I know you said you have...
I have these elevations. These are what I've done for the commercial, for the exterior, the design, but I haven't moved forward with the design until this just has... This is the same one that you saw last week. I didn't have it updated because you couldn't see the two-foot bump-in on this rendering anyway.
Yeah, that's on the other side.
Yeah, 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 it's on the back side, yeah.
Going back off of that.
Yeah, yeah.
And this was a brick side and the other side as well.
Yeah, that's going to be brick as well.
Everything else is wood.
Yep.
Shinked roof.
Yep.
Okay, the only thing we really don't have in front of us... You know, on the center protection, you have a historical chart for colorings, exterior colorings and finishings, what have you.
You have the building.
Everything that's going to remain in that color scheme.
Yeah.
It's going to be white, and that's what you're showing there.
If you're happy it's white, it'll be white.
Supposed to be white.
I just...
We usually, we have, when a building comes into the center, you know, we work off of a color chart.
I'll get you...
And as long as you work within the color chart, you're basically okay, but just you can't go into the color that...
No, no, I'll work within the color chart.
It's like then you know a historical...
Then you're more historical...
Historic white.
White.
Yeah, you know what I mean? It's basically what you tell us, is that's the way it's going to go. Brick surfaces, brick.
Yeah.
Just the only thing I can say there is you try to get something that's...
I'd like to get that war... They make a historic brick? I don't know what it looks like. Yeah, I don't want that brick that's shiny, you know, square with the sharp corners, yeah.
You want something that's going to go into the scheme again, that's going to fit. Well, window design and all the features.
Yeah, they're going to be, you know, they'll be, you know, the grids will have, you know, six over six or whatever. Maybe, you know, the lower ones was, he has nine over nine there.
Quick thing, signage is going to be up front. I would assume that basically you're going to put some kind of signage that...
Yeah, it's got that in the drawings, I'm sorry that I can shoot...
Stention of...
There's the...
Oh, yeah, the pro sign, I'm sorry.
Yeah, right there, and then it's in the, you know, it's just, it's in the... There were some guidelines for materials for the sign in the rules and regs, which we...
Don't shoot 10.
Okay, that's fine. The screening, vegetated screening.
Yeah, and again, I can open up this...
What about the interior in terms of design? The access to the first, to the second floor apartments?
I think right now...
Do you have a safety, you know, is it a safety regulation?
Well, yeah, I will, I'll have to submit that with the building department, but that will be, there'll be two accesses. We'll have handicap grant that comes along that covered, that little right there, that's a cover, so you can access it from here or here, so that'll be ground level, and we have the grading available to... We'll come in right here or here if I get two tenants in. I'd like to get one big tenant, but if I get two, I can get two accesses in the upstairs. I just need, they don't need to be handicap accessible, I can do... They have to have two entrances, you know, so I have one in the back off the...
The stairway in the front, or the access to the front of the building?
That probably, I don't know if that's going to be a real entrance or not, because I don't know if people are going to...
Come off the street?
Yeah, because, I don't know, because we're going to have the sidewalk going up to the side to the... I'm sure there'll be something, you know, the entrance over here, but I don't know if that's going to be a real, or it has to be a real entrance, I don't know. I guess it would depend on if I got two tenants and I had to split that space, then that would be the second egress, the front entrance. So, and again, that would just be like a wood historical door, maybe even a pineapple knock, who knows?
So that...
So you're thinking if people come up the street, they come down the sidewalk, they enter one of these doors?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, because the sidewalk doesn't go to the front on this, it goes right past it up into there. I might do some sort of, maybe a stone, like just some flagstone to the front, just to...
Or brick.
So they're...
Yeah, brick, yeah, brick wall. But I mean, honestly, it's got to be a door there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be a door, but it'll be a primary...
It becomes the least potential, the second means of eagles, in the second floor.
No, the second means...
Wouldn't be like a foyer with a stairway up?
No, I wasn't, we have a staircase on the inside because then I'm taking away from commercial space.
You lose commercial space.
It leaves that space in the front.
But at the end of the day, you've got to provide reasonable safety...
Oh, no, I will, yeah, 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 there'll be, there'll be...
I don't see too many where egress will say here and 10 feet will over here. Oh, that's my second thing, apparently, probably on the fire code, but...
No, it would be 30...
The point being on the front door...
At least 35 feet away.
It has to demonstrate that it's not a photo, shall we say.
Yeah, no, I can, I can, because as we were talking, I was thinking, it would be the second means of egress if I separated that space, so that would be operational, yeah.
I'm just saying from the design, from the exterior point of view, that's going to appear on the street.
Yeah.
Follow me.
Yep.
So, I mean, also common to this type of design would be not so much like you have a little front door porch type scenario there, cover it, almost, you know, a flat door to the surface overall, but something like ornate window design, if you will, around the door. So that might be an accident, you know, a possibility to, you know what I'm saying, like a...
Like an eyebrow window?
Yeah, like an eyebrow window over the front, top or something.
Like a transom light.
Yeah.
So have no, have no portico, like get rid of that and do a transom light.
That would be just as well, because historically, that's as appropriate as...
And then I don't have to build a portico. Look at you saving money.
I know, I'm always taking it.
I like it. Go an eyebrow, eyebrow window. Yeah, no, I see, I know exactly what you're... Yeah, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Maybe you can screw stuff with a brick walkway or something that leads into it.
Failing.
But even if it were a single meter in the first floor, the commercial area, it wouldn't seem to be any effect to them.
Nope.
It keeps the square footage, but it keeps historically kind of correct also.
Yeah, because if people are waiting to get in with their key in the rain, they're going to be around the corner, they're not going to be standing at the front door, they're going to be around the corner.
I would think so, you know, this is the main entrance into the commercial space, you're going to be coming off of the drive area and those few parking spaces.
Yeah.
And/or whatever's on the other side available if you put the parking...
Yeah, that's where I was thinking, that's where we have a... Over here is where the entrance to the apartments, you know, a foyer in there.
Right. The landscape plan that you had submitted, I believe, showed vegetated barrier going up and along this property line here with your...
Yep.
Butter to the right.
I think we're over there.
So we're going to get some landscaping in here, et cetera, and you should do a lot to kind of block off the residential from the commercial space.
That's all your sheeting.
Yeah, yeah, there's a significant vegetated barrier along that section.
Well, the purpose here would be kind of just try to separate the two of it and...
Is it smaller vegetation than the larger trees, that long reading?
Yeah, here's a, I don't know if this is easier to see.
I think better is easier to see. Oh, yeah, I think you beefed it up from your previous plan.
Yeah, and these are all... And then these are all the new ones along.
I like this here along here, too.
Yeah, you added here, so the view from the street was a bit obstructed.
Yep.
Okay, well, I think that's good. What does the board feel about that? Does everything look like we're going to get good screening and all?
Lot of trees, screening here, too.
91 of them.
Now, what's the deal down here?
Is that all?
120 bucks a foot.
What's the, I see down here you have screening all around this property, especially here.
And then there's some fencing. There's nothing there. That's actually a drainage easement, so nothing will ever be there on that other side.
It's a drainage easement for you or for the other property?
For the other properties, this property and Teale's property, and I don't know why it's there, it's on the...
Are there some, is there some natural vegetation there?
Yes.
Oh, it's all tree, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
All that backline area or sideline area on there is...
And then there's also, there's also...
I think what that drainage takes is off of mountain ave, it's probably required by the town, isn't it?
That's what I think, it looks, it's big, so I think...
And it just goes in back there and takes everything off the mountain ave.
So that can never really be demolished, all that vegetation?
No.
No.
So that provides a natural screen.
It does provide natural screen.
And then there's also fencing. There's also fencing, a lot of the orange is fencing.
Where are your mailboxes going to be? How's that work out in the setup? Do you have, you have like a central mailbox?
Yeah, there was something on the drawing here, but I didn't, we were thinking about maybe putting them over here so you can pull around and check. I mean, it's 22 feet wide, so it's long enough for someone to go around it.
Roundy and allow cars to collect those box access type thing.
But I didn't know that the septic field is right here, so, and you can do that, I just wasn't sure, so we're going to...
Another question.
Yeah, but I don't want people to have to pull into here in order to get the mailbox.
Right, to get to the mailbox.
Well, it's going to be somewhere, somewhere up in this area. He had it on a previous drawing there, but I had him take it off just because I wasn't, I didn't want to show something I may not...
Okay, now you have a septic up in here, right?
No, that's the, that's the fail, for the backup, yeah. But realistically, you'd never use that because it's a lot cheaper just to dig up the, if the primary fails, dig that up and redo that one.
Yeah, how should it be used in facilities?
Even, even putting all the fill in, it would still be cheaper?
Yeah, yeah, because then you're...
Well, all the piping's running this way, not...
Yeah, so everything's running to it, I'd have to change everything.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
You have to put in a pump station.
There, well, we have, yeah, we have three pumps already.
So do we ever get a traffic study?
Yep.
How'd that work out?
Right?
It's mentioned in the, in the comments.
But I don't know that we ever actually saw it, did we?
Yeah.
I don't think we ever...
Is it in the...
But I think the comments, he says he's satisfied with it, but I'm not sure.
Who says he's satisfied with it?
Peter Palmieri.
Peter.
But I'm not sure if we ever...
Who makes the decisions?
It's good, right? It's finished before.
Still have to come here.
Well, you have, it has to be a report submitted. It has to be reported, you have to say, Matthew, that we haven't received a report?
I just want to make sure it's with the...
Grab the in the file.
With the file.
Yeah.
Is there any photometric files?
Yep, last page.
Is it on the internet, right, like LED lighting all over the place? Or is it just going to be...
It's going to meet the bylaw, it's going to meet the bylaw.
Well, it's up, I mean, for the...
I drive around to Washington, it's very...
You can't find it back?
Very often.
It might be over there.
It might be too.
I mean, if you want a, if you want another copy, I mean, I can, if you can't find it, I can drop off, and Peter has a copy that he can...
I think a lot of them are...
I can also send you an electronic copy because it's 120...
I think I've got some PDFs here.
Okay. Just want to make sure we have it with the file.
And I'll probably want to go with tonight's discussion, but I'm just asking the plan in general. I want to make a motion or whatever.
Do you want a motion to close the public hearing? Or do you want a motion to accept the plan as submitted?
That's first.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we accept the plan as submitted for the architectural review of the Center Protection District for Plan SP 117 at 220 Center Street.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done.
And then conditions of approval could be written when?
Well, it's like the... Yeah, so the draft, the draft is in there, and the draft of the special permit.
Is there...
So I think my, my sort of...
driveway width might be...
Yes.
Can I ask, can I ask a question of what the special permit hasn't been filed yet?
Because apparently, I thought we just...
Yes, we did. No, no, we made a 20...
Send a letter.
I thought it would just be sending a letter up, but apparently we didn't know that we have to do the whole, all of it goes.
The site plan, is it, so site plan approval is attached to the special permit?
No.
Well, yeah, the conditions I've done, there's, all three of the things are in the, I mean, part of the problem is I've, I guess the planning board hardly ever does special permits, is my first one, but all three, in the proceedings and decision, I put all three together, and then there's also a separate page, which is just the special permit, which apparently the, apparently town clerk doesn't need to get that, that just goes there. The one that's just one page, the one page, yeah. And so that apparently, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sort of a lawyer, but from my understanding of the master general law, and so that seems to be...
So we thought, it was like a letter was sufficient, but it's not, I guess we have the wood, all this other stuff.
But if they're not conditions of the special permit, why would they need to be, they're not conditions of the special, they're conditions of the site plan?
I don't know, Matthew, you're the one who...
Yeah, my, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but just looking at general law and also this thing we got from town council years ago, and looking at what Maryland did before, it looks as though for the special permit to sort of, to submit it to town clerk, it should be with a full proceedings and decision, and so not just a letter.
Can we get all this out tonight? Like, is this something where you can just plug in the whole information, we can plug it out in final and sign it tonight?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think, yeah, the things that I've put in, the things I've highlighted are what I need to change, which is, can be done in 10 minutes, I think, and I guess you don't have to read it aloud, right? Because it's not a subdivision, so it's not...
Except for the conditions, yeah.
Ah, then I guess if you read the conditions, that'll take a few minutes, too.
Well, no, because we're going to read them exactly the way you have them.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, whatever, five minutes, two minutes, whatever. Usually Brian's a pretty fast reader, I guess.
We got time, let's do it.
So I think, I'm trying to remember.
So we look, I guess we're looking for a motion.
For the, let me just, I'm sorry, for the waivers, so I'm trying to remember, not getting them. So I think you guys, okay, for 220 Center, you guys never voted to grant the waivers, I think, looking at my records, so I think you do need to do that.
Where are the waivers listed on the plan?
Should be listed on the plan.
They're in the decision, they're in the decision also, one of the conditions.
Waiver requests, development impact statement, parking and loading, any entrance or existing driveway shall be a minimum of 24 feet, request to allow 22 feet and to eliminate the requirement of curbing at edges of all paved surfaces. Those are three waivers.
But the curbing will...
We still have curbing in the whole...
At the radius?
Yes, yeah, 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 that's all, like all the granite curbing and all the front, that's on there.
Let me ask one other thing quickly on that waiver.
What's that?
One other thing on your waiver request. It shows on your current plan 24 feet, you're requesting 22, is that actually...
No, that's right, the entrance, the commercial area is 24 all the way up to here, and then when it goes into residential, it's 22.
So you're talking about the 22 on the residential section of this?
Correct, correct, yeah, that's, the plan as is will stay with the 24 on there, so then it would...
So you have the 24 feet leading to...
And that's all curbing up there as well.
That's 150 feet.
You got that lined up, that'd be nice, too.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we accept the following waivers to the plan. One, a development impact statement. Two, parking and loading, any entrance or existing driveway shall be a minimum of 24 feet. It will be 24 feet at the entrance, and then 22 feet at the residential section, and then three, to eliminate the requirement of curbing at edges of all paved surfaces in the residential section.
That sounds right. I'll second that motion, all right? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
So Matthew's going to take it up? Would this work?
Yeah, that's what you said. Shut the door.
Matthew, here's what we could adjust it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's exactly what, it's exactly what Andy just said, I just...
Give that up to...
I just, I modified the language to reflect what Andy said.
Okay, so next we're doing...
We've already granted the special permit, we just need to sign this tonight, right?
And we do one of the conditions, we've got them here.
I can't read the conditions because I just gave them shit. I can't read the conditions because I just give them shit all.
Well, I don't know.
No, no, that's okay, you can. There's all else, Ken.
It's pretty short, actually.
So, so we're talking about page...
Yeah, we're talking about, uh...
Approval subject to the following conditions?
Exactly.
Okay. I'll just read it real fast. All work should be done in accordance with the stand plans entitled Site Plan 220 Center Street, Pembroke, Mass. By Grady Consulting LLC. dated February 2nd, 2017, revised March 10th, 2017, revised April 24th, 2017, and revised May 3rd, 2017.
Uh, I don't know if we should, for these ones, that is just submitted today, I don't know.
These are the same set you have.
So they're the May 3rd ones?
No, no changes have been made since May 8th, correct?
And accepted by the planning board on May 8th, as well as the following additional conditions. All signage must comply with the applicable provisions of the town's bylaws and regulations. All vegetation planted in accordance with this decision shall be reasonably watered and maintained until established. Should any vegetation die out, the petitioner shall plant replacements. The developer shall provide water as per the regulations of the Department of Public Works. The petition, by, the petitioner shall submit an as-built plan with a written statement approved by the board that all conditions of this vote have been complied with before an occupancy permit may be issued. Number six, all site work must comply with existing regulatory town bylaws as to times work may commence and end, and two days of the week when site work can be conducted. Number seven, all outstanding comments and the Merrill engineers and land surveyors reviewed or shall be satisfactorily, satisfactorily addressed. Number eight, with the reference to the waivers requested on the cover page of the drawing entitled Site Plan 220 Center Street, Pembroke, Mass, by Grady Consulting LLC, blah, 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 as previously voted and approved by this board. Section A, section four fifteen, development impact statement. B, section five, uh, four.
Um, that's where we said parking and loading, any entrance or exit driveway shall be a minimum of twenty-four feet in width and twenty-two feet in width in the residential areas.
And twenty-two feet in width in residential areas. C, section five, six-two, curving shall be placed at the edge of all paved surfaces.
And how did I revise that, Matthew?
In the residential section.
No.
No, not in the, not in the residential section.
At the entrance. Curving shall be placed at the edge of all paved services, except for...
Except, except, except in the residential section?
Yes.
Except in the residential section.
Matt, let me...
Oh, I didn't, I didn't put that on.
You wanna finish up?
All right. Well, that's it?
No, the special permit runs through the...
Oh, the special permit, the petitioner only should not run with the land. Should the petitioner leave the property, the special permit shall become null and void. Any judicial appeal from this decision regarding the special permit shall be made pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 17, and any such appeal shall be filed within twenty days from the filing of the decision with the office of the town clerk of Pembroke. If substantial use of rights authorized by the site plan approval are not exercised within two years of the date on which a copy of this decision is filed with the town clerk, then the site plan approval shall expire.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's just make it understood between us, you're talking about the curving going to residential section, right? Is that, is to make it clear that if we state, state an elevation, like ninety-two feet according to this, I don't see any exact station for you.
Here, it's, um, highlighted, I know you're the small...
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, so, it's, um, he's got it actually, the curving on the joint, still the dark, the dark curving coming up to here and all along here, and the radius is granted.
It would stop at this?
Yeah. Yeah, because I think this is a wash point to go into this holding basin, so you can, can put curving there.
Okay, so you, you've got it listed as to this point?
Yep.
All right, so once we get a point, we get a point. We're on the same page.
We just refer back to the plan, not exception.
Matthew, actually...
Just the residential.
I think yours has...
But now he's got, he does show it on the, he's shown it.
Yeah, um...
Mate, I don't think anything's been updated.
Yeah.
So I make sure that has that extended sidewalk.
Yep, that's it.
Paul, Paul Galvin, make sure whatever's submitted, what he needs, you have a special permit issued. Um, do you all hear that, Matthew?
So...
You could double check with, with, um, contact Galvin to find out.
Whatever Bob says, Bob.
But we need to sign this tonight, though.
Yeah, let's sign the, uh...
I'm not ever Bob.
Bob's been wrong.
At this point, we've approved it.
We've approved it, yeah.
We got a short phone call, please.
If there's something, let's just submit it.
So...
Because we thought, thought we might be taking that action at our last meeting, but apparently it's...
We're taking it at this meeting, too, so...
Well, that's what I'm just saying.
You got your suspenders with your belt.
Yeah, that, Matthew, what is always the old reliable? Contact, compliment, page, when the question is...
But Brian, I think at this point, he's, he's already done all of that, and he wants to...
I just bought one copy.
I have this one, actually, that's fine. I want to sign anything, I just hope that...
It works.
We are...
If it's not, we'll hear about it, I'm sure.
Well, we'll hear about it, we'll have to respond the next time, I mean, which...
Would delay you even further?
But it's even, it's all closed.
So, so we can just...
Do it outside of the...
We gotta sort out any issues if anything comes up.
We could just ask, do we come back and sign it?
We're gonna sign it tonight while we're all here.
Actually, right now, I'm bumping up against our winner, you know, for concrete foundations and everything.
You're trying to get a frame before the winner?
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to get the first couple houses, CEOs, and the commercial before the war.
We, these are, by the way, we wish in the fact that this commercial building has to be...
It's in the, uh, variances. In fact, I have to go back to the zoning board, they had, they miss, they incorrectly wrote something in the variances.
No.
It's, uh, it said they had to build first, but it's concurrent with the, with the residential, you know, so... So I'm gonna build it first, just because I don't want to be...
Well, it's also residential.
Yeah, um, so...
It's concurrent.
But I guess it's concurrent, yeah.
I just don't want to get a repeat where we get, you know, fourteen hoses in the back and nothing else.
Oh, no, it's in the variances, I have to build it.
Yeah.
Plus, like I said...
That gives me absolutely no assurance.
I got, I got two apartments up there.
Ever night, unless you go back there and give it a new variance, it says not...
So, just out of curiosity, that front building, that one's gonna be sprinkled?
Yes, that has to be, yeah.
And that will be, so you're building that first?
I'm building, I'm start, I'm doing the whole site at once, because I have to do all the septic system already got brought, so I have to do everything at once. And then I'll do, um, the commercial, and then, I don't know, the left side, the right side, I'll probably do two or three, um, three different models.
Probably do the ones that get sold first.
Yeah, and then see which, see how, you know, see how they're going, um, see if people, which model they like better, um...
And that's what you'll build first?
Yeah, and those are the ones all.
Now, just out of curiosity, um, are you gonna come in here when someone says, well, I like this, or I want over here? We're gonna end up twisting this thing around, uh...
Um...
Are you gonna build these custom, you're gonna build them one spec, right?
If someone wants a certain design, but they're wired on a certain location, that's not shown...
Building a design for the residential, right, for the wisteria, these are all things you have a design element.
Yeah, so they're...
The wisteria's different than the puma.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, they're different, they're not all gonna be football, 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 same.
No, I understand that, but I mean, you don't have a client that's gonna say, well, I want that particular one on this particular site and have to come in here again, are you?
Um, I don't think so, because the footprints, I don't have, believe it, I mean, it's a big site and I have a lot of open space, but I don't have a lot of wiggle room because of the way the road is structured. Now, if I wanna put, if I wanna switch a, you know, a carver on the left side with a, a wisteria or something, I'm not gonna increase the lot coverage, and they're the same, they're, they're, you know, they're all within...
On the same footprint?
Yeah, they're all about, within a hundred square feet of each other, um, so...
But you're gonna stay within the design of the...
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, but I'm looking at, I don't see you have a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, I don't.
If you wanted to.
Exactly.
Because of all, you know, like, you have twenty feet between these two buildings, if you turn them around, I don't, you know...
Yeah, you may, you may mess yourself up.
Exactly, and there's nothing with the garage space, and honestly, the, um, the six that are ranches, they're fairly, they're, they're smaller, fifteen, oh, just under sixteen hundred square feet, but they're sprawling, like, branches are all on one floor, so...
That's actually, you know, if you put that to the fours, that's up to three thousand square feet.
Yeah, big house, but now it's all on...
Yeah, you should see the size of the commercial building, it has to go in for it.
Wow. Sorry. Got a little carried away there.
So, it'll, uh...
So, keep, um, while Matthew's typing, can we approve the minutes of the sidewalk on May 20th?
So he's typing it?
Oh, am I, sidewalk?
I think we're just waiting on that, and we're gonna sign it.
Oh, okay, so am I done?
I guess.
Well, unless you're awake for the...
Oh, yeah, I'll wait, spend a year, might as well.
It looks like you had a vacation to be true.
I sailed up, I was out on the water, and I got sunburned delivering a boat, Brian.
All right, so, I wasn't on the sidewalk, so...
So Tom, Brian, Andy, all in agreement?
I'm going to approve the, uh, Matthew's sidewalk, three, sidewalk, whatever, May 20th?
May 20th?